I'd like to call to order the December 21 regular meeting of the Fall River School Committee. Deb, please call the roll.
Mr. Agia?
Here.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Harp?
Here.
Mr. Hudson?
Here.
Mr. Corey?
Here.
Ms. Lawrie?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Here. Salute to the flag. For allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived, by those present and are deemed acknowledged and permissible. Citizens input. We have a few letters tonight. I'm going to ask the committee to waive the rules to allow Deb to read two letters from out of town. Do I have any objections on the reading?
Motion to waive the rules.
Second.
Deb, you want to call the roll?
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Harp?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Here.
Ms. Lawrie?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. So we'll start with those, Deb, okay? Please.
The first letter is from Kurt Bostrow. He resides at 45 Oak Street in Providence, Rhode Island. Members of the Fall River School Committee, I am writing to express my support for the superintendent's recent decision, informed by the pandemic advisory committee's recommendation to switch the district to remote learning. I don't do so lightly. Despite my initial support for a fully remote start, I have changed my mind. The data around the country and the world have shown that the right precautions, schools are not a major site of transmission, convincing me that in-person learning is largely safe. Unfortunately, the positivity rate is outrageously high in Fall River, 11.11% right now, endangering everyone's safety. In November alone, we've had 2,132 new cases in the city. Put another way, we've had the same total number of cases this month as we had from the start of the pandemic in March through the end of September. This is the result of a dramatic failure of leadership. Our elected leaders, from the very top on down, have not done what's necessary to curb the spread, both in terms of public health measures and financial relief. Keep the schools open, yes. Prioritize the education of our kids, their futures, but close the restaurants and the bars, cancel parties, give people the money they need to stay home safely. I recognize that these are hard, unpopular choices, but people are dying, hundreds of thousands of people. Now absurd lines are drawn. Do we want students to fall behind, or do you want them to get sick? Call me crazy, I don't want either. As a teacher at Durfee, I see my students struggling across the board. They need more school, not less. As for me, I don't like teaching online, there's no question. Then, that I'm reluctant for us to go remote. But some things got to give. Here in Massachusetts, I hope we make the sacrifices required to reopen our schools as soon as possible. The second letter is from a Leanna Gorman from 56 Coasette Drive, Brockton, Mass. She's a teacher at Durfee High School. I think everyone can agree that the ideal world be for all students to be learning in a safe environment, in person with their teachers. However, this year has been anything but ideal, and this is definitely not a safe environment. The guidelines and procedures in place to help with health and safety look great on paper, but do not always work. Six feet away in classrooms is great, but some rooms now cannot fit the amount of students in the class, or they have to sacrifice social distancing. Staggered dismissal times are good, but students use the time to wander or to wait around for their friends. We were told multiple times that students refusing to comply with the safety guidelines would be moved to Cohort B and not allowed in the building, but that has not happened. Students refusing to wear masks currently, or even, I'm sorry, masks correctly or even at all, are being merely spoken to. Frustrated and scared, teachers are being told there is nothing else they can do. Contact tracing has been proven to aid with minimizing the spread, but it is not happening enough here. In one case, a teacher tested positive, and other teachers who the teacher eats lunch with and shares rooms with were not notified. In another case, a concerned teacher reached out to the nurse about quarantining since a large percentage of her kids were out and not cleared to come to school. She was told that it was not necessary to quarantine since she was not exposed. According to CDC guidelines, a person is considered in close contact if they were within six feet of an infected person for a cumulative total of 15 minutes or more during a 24-hour period, whether they have masks or not. This means that any of our teacher's students, regardless if they are wearing masks, are in close contact throughout most of the day with many different people. Every single day, it is a battle to convince myself to come into the building. The only thing that has kept me pushing through so far is the thought that this is all going to be temporary. I hoped that the governor and/or school committee would finally acknowledge the precarious situation we are in and take action for the good of the people. But when it was finally admitted that things are not safe, I felt hopeful for the first time in months. But then it was announced that students in Cohort A would be remaining in person. After all previous decisions have been made and altered in the name of equity amongst teachers and students, I cannot fathom how moving to a partially hybrid model might be justified. Since Cohort A is full of students who are academically considered high-risk, they are in very specific classes and not mixed throughout the population within the school, the majority of teachers and students have been told their lives matter and their health is important, so they will be learning remotely for the next few weeks. However, for the small group of us that teach and learn in these Cohort A classes, the message is clearly completely the opposite. The gross inequity created amongst teachers is disgusting and embarrassing. I love my job, and up until this year, I have very much enjoyed working here, but nothing is worth the amount of anxiety, fear, and fruitless efforts this year has brought. I started this year feeling unsafe, unvalued, unheard, unsure about whether or not this is the type of school system I wish to continue working for. The decisions made since have only magnified these feelings. Health and safety need to come first. There is no way in which teaching and learning can be effective or impactful if the people involved are overly stressed and fearful and feel their mental and physical well-being has been compromised and disregarded by those in power.
Thanks, Deb. We have a third letter that's going to be ruled out of order. It doesn't comply with the public comment regulations for our school committee meetings. Speakers may offer objective criticisms or concerns regarding school operations or programs. It's number five under procedures. But in public session, the committee will not hear personal complaints of school personnel nor against any member of the school community. Administrative channels are the proper means for disposition of legitimate complaints involving staff members. That takes care of citizens input. We have no recognition awards tonight. The superintendent's report, number four.
There is no superintendent's report. It's all on the agenda tonight.
Okay. Student delegate reports. Obviously, we have a couple of resumes from both of our student delegates. They look like very promising members of the committee. As soon as we get out of this COVID mess, I'm sure they'll be contributing. Mr. Costa?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just, just so the committee's aware that I had the opportunity to meet with both delegates remotely, I believe it was about, I think it was last week, if I'm not mistaken, gave them sort of an overview of the committee and our agenda and thought that they may be joining us virtually this evening, but, oh, there's one of them.
Riley is. Riley is.
Mr. Kane, Riley Kane. So we do have one of our delegates on, joining us virtually. Just so the committee's aware, they are up to speed now about their role, although maybe a little bit challenging, given that a lot of the topics they would bring forward to us may be shortened, given their in-person learning. But just wanted the committee to be aware, I did meet with them. They're both excited, both, in my opinion, you know, great choices to serve as delegates, and I look forward to having them participate in these meetings with us. With that, I yield, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Next, approval of minutes. 6-1, approval of minutes for the regular school committee meeting from October 19th. Can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
How about 6-2? Can we get those, Deb, I'm sorry, call the roll.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Harp?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Lawrie?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. 6-2 is approved.
Mr. Mayor?
I'm sorry, Kev, go ahead.
Just, I wanted to say Riley actually went on like when Mr. Costa was talking, so I'm not sure if he wants to say something, but you probably couldn't see it.
I couldn't, I could not see that.
So I think he's on and might want to say something, but.
Riley, do you want to join us?
There he is.
All I want to say is that I'm extremely excited to make a change. I want to reach out to all the students of Durfee, the middle schools. If anyone has any thoughts, I just want to be part of this great change in Fall River.
Appreciate it. Thanks for joining us.
Thank you for having me.
6-2, approval of the minutes for the regular school committee from 11:09. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Deb, please call the roll.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Harp?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Lawrie?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. 6-3 is the approval of the minutes from the special meeting of the school committee on 11:24. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Discussion? Deb, please call the roll.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Harp?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Lawrie?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. We have no travel requests at this time. Item number eight is the acceptance of donations. I'll turn it over to Superintendent Malone.
Sure. Point of order, I think you accept them first and I read them.
Okay, I'm sorry. You are correct. Do I have a motion to accept the donations?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, Deb.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Harp?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Lawrie?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Thank you, Dr. Malone, go ahead.
Sure. From Matook to the Fall River Public Schools, Matook Linensay donated 12,000 face masks valued at $30,000 to the school system. From Whirlpool to the Henry Lord Community School, donation of an energy-efficient washer and dryer valued at $10,000. From Joseph E. Mulaney, class of 1951 from Durfee High School, class president, a donation of $10,000. From Dick's Sporting Goods to Durfee High School Athletics, $1,000. Miss Beverly Owen to Morton Middle School, refillable water bottles valued at $845. From Pell Industries Incorporated to Durfee High School, $230.41. From Ohio Plyo Prints Incorporated to Durfee High School, $108.26. And from Gift2Give to RPA 24 winter coats. Thank you to our philanthropic donations.
Thank you. Approval of contracts. Does anybody have a hold on any of the contracts tonight? I'll entertain a motion?
Motion to approve.
Do we have a second?
Second.
I have a motion, a second. Deb, please call the roll.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Harp?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Lawrie?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Approval of grants. We have four grants tonight. Does anybody have any concerns on the grants?
Question?
Kev?
I didn't get a chance to look at the, can somebody just summarize the secondary virtual course access? Like what is that?
I'm here. So that particular grant is an allocation grant based on the, you know, general needs of the district and the schools that we have in our, and their accountability status. And it's, we wrote a grant that will allow for the staffing, for outreach and support of students who are working virtually. We can use it to support students who are working in the fully remote model, as well as students who are working in the hybrid model while they're working at home. So when we're back in a fully, a full hybrid model, they can support students during their off weeks. So the model really consists of after-school support for students. So there's academic help desk, tech help desk, and outreach for SEL support. We're looking at a model that Durfee is currently using during the school day where SEL support folks are actually attending academic help sessions with students as they integrate them back in. It's really focused on students who have been chronically absent, either, again, during fully remote, or if they're working in a hybrid model and not showing up to the classes during those remote weeks.
You know, and it has to be, I just pulled it up now, but it has to be after school? It can't be extra supports during the day?
It can be, but we're, there isn't, as we're staffing and looking at those opportunities, there is an opportunity to pay teachers during prep time to do that work as well. But it seemed like there was a need across the schools to kind of extend that help later into the day. Students had expressed interest because they're, you know, they have classes during the day and they're looking for some extra help after hours. So, but we can, we can use it during the school day, it just has to be for students who are working remotely.
Yeah, no, it makes sense. When the wording, I only saw on the agenda, secondary virtual course. I didn't know if we were reaching out to like virtual courses that are offered in other places. That's what I, I wasn't sure of, but.
There was an opportunity in terms of the funding. We could have used it to pay for something like Edgenuity or to offer other course options, but where we already had the staffing in place to offer the courses themselves and we had that software, we decided to use the money for people to extend the outreach.
It makes sense. Thank you.
Okay.
Anything further? Tommy?
Yes, sir. Dr. Curly. No, I'm just curious, as to the nature of the grant, is that coming from the federal government?
It is, through the state, but it's federal money.
Yeah, through the state. So it's in recognition of the learning hit that's happened as a result of COVID-19 all over, not only our state, but our country as well?
Absolutely.
That's what I wanted to know, really. Thank you very much. I yield.
Anything further? Thanks, Trace. Roll call, please.
I need.
Oh, you need a motion, a second? Approval of grants?
Motion to approve grants.
Second.
Roll call, Deb?
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Harp?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Lawrie?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Item number 11 for the committee of the hall, our first discussion item, is a presentation of Superintendent Malone's budget priorities for '22.
So this is a first reading of, start of a process. As you know, the, we just, you know, the state just approved the FY '21 budget, and it's ironic that we're planning already for FY '22. But this is our first iteration of what we're going to be looking at and prioritize in our budget process. That, of course, again, this is a first read. We'll come back to the committee next month. If the committee has comments or concerns, they can email me, call me, I can continue to work on this document. But this is a document culled from many discussions internal in the school system, plus priorities that we've been working on for the last couple of years. So you can see, we have five areas, multi-tiered systems of support, which is all the academic supports, and then instructional technology and student information systems, special education, our second language learner program, the multilingual learners, and then facilities and operations. We have five buckets. They're similar to the five buckets we've had over the last couple of years. And again, this is a first read of a document that we'll bring forward to the committee in January with details to be addressed and questions to be answered. So if you have any comments, concerns, please feel free to email me or call me.
Thank you, Dr. Malone. Any questions? Okay. Item number two, again, is a presentation by Dr. Malone on the COVID-19 data and our school reopening plans.
So this is the meat of tonight's meeting, and under item two, in your binder, you have a lengthy data presentation. That presentation was put together over the last month. I want to thank HR Director Tom Coogan and Dr. Tracy Curly for their work on putting together data to make it easy to understand. As you know, since we've opened, we've been struggling with, you know, maintaining our operations in the district, but I think we've done a great job. I want to thank, I get our FREA President Cusick here, and she's been a real partner. I know she's also had challenges, of course, with members, but I think we've done a great job of keeping everyone safe. We've mitigated the concerns that folks had with opening. I think the school committee adopted a really strong reopening plan. We opened on September 16th, and we've been successful. However, there's been, you know, great spread across Massachusetts, across the country. Fall River's no exception. There's been increase in spread, so we've continued to rise in the, in the community transmission rates. As a result of that, we got to a point where we were, I made the decision that we would move to the modified hybrid to keep the numbers down in schools to kind of maintain footprints. We made that decision that we would run in the modified hybrid serving Cohort A students. Now, I want to be real clear about Cohort A, special needs and low-level foundation L learners, plus some other high-needs McKinney-Vento, plus the CVTE shop kids. So it's about 1,400 kids. We have to provide services to those children. So the districts that went full remote this year, that weren't providing in-person experiences for those children, all got jammed up with the department, and they've had to change their practice. We've, we're open, and we've done a really good job maintaining, you know, not many districts opened with as many students as we did. It was us in New Bedford. In the modified hybrid, we're down to about 1,400, but that's still a large percentage of kids. We're meeting the needs of the children that we have. And the question is, so when do we get back to a place where we're in, back to the full hybrid, which we were in up through December 7th? So what I'm proposing tonight for discussion is a plan that gets us back to that place. Now granted, nothing is perfect, of course, and we know from experience, and I know Nurse Long is here, she'll help answer questions tonight too, if needed, but I know from experience, we have, we saw an uptick after Thanksgiving break, and we expect, and the governor said it again today, he expects to see another uptick after the Christmas holiday break. So my initial thinking was, let's come back right after Christmas. The problem is, over that 10-day shutdown of the school system, there's not going to be any data shared. So we're not going to be able to contact Trace as much as we would like, and that's, you know, that's, that's something that we know will lead to increased numbers the following week. So what we're proposing, or what I'm proposing, is a path back, is to stay in the current modified hybrid model that we're currently in, and it's on the calendar on the third page of the, of the document. And then in January, instead of coming back on the 4th or the 11th, we would return back to the full hybrid on the 19th. That's the Tuesday after the Mount Luther King holiday. And we would return back to the full hybrid, six feet distancing, K to 8, or pre-K to 8. Durfee and RPA, the high school, would stay out through the 29th because, A, that's when the semester ends. And right now, the remote learning model at the 9th, 12th level, attendance is very good. So we'd finish the first half of the year in that remote learning model for cohorts B, C, and D. Of course, A would be there. And then they return on February 1st. So as of February 1st, we'd be back to the full hybrid model that we're in up through December 7th. And that would allow us essentially a two-week period following the Christmas break to monitor, to look at what the numbers are, to see, and, you know, hopefully the rates come down, and then we're in a much better place. But if we set now and set the expectation that the 19th is the return date, K to 8, the 1st is the return date for the 9th through 12th, I believe, based on is, you can see the hardest part for us has been managing the system with the numbers of absences. So you can see we have an uptick in absences. It's about 60 more people a day than it was last year at this time. That, that's been pretty, you know, hard for us to manage, but it's, again, it's been all hands. I do have to say, I mean, everyone has stepped up. I cannot speak highly enough about our professionals, who have all stepped up to cover classes, to, you know, leave whatever jobs they do to be able to make sure that our model works. And, you know, if this model goes well, we're talking about, you know, we have the January, February, the vaccine's going to be much more prevalent. You know, we get to a place maybe later in the spring, we're able to drop to three-foot distancing and get even more kids back, and then hopefully by the end of the year, we're able to get everyone back. But this would be a way for us to be smart. We said, we said all along, we were going to look at the data, we're going to be practical, we're going to be prudent, you know, and I think the movement to the remote hybrid, I mean, the modified hybrid, of course, some people are like, oh, I want my kid in school, and I get that. And if they didn't qualify for the Cohort A, they, you know, they're in the, you know, full remote. But this gives us another two weeks at the vacation. So you think about, if you look at days, today, tomorrow, Wednesday, we're on break. Then we come back on the 4th, so we're really only going to be, it would be eight more in-person days that we would be out, K to 8, and then we get back on the day after Mount Luther King Day. And that would be for Cohorts A and D at that time. So this is, and I raise this as, you know, for, I want to get committee to be comfortable with what we're thinking, to get consensus on this and be able to communicate that this is where we're going. Right now, the public thinks we're coming back on the 4th, because that's what I said originally, but I said it's subject to change based on the numbers. And really, what's moved me to think through is that we saw the huge spike after Thanksgiving. If we let people come back blindly without knowing what those transmissions are after Christmas, I take a great risk of further spread. So if we can manage that and mitigate it for those two weeks, that gives us a really good window on the 19th to get back to the, to the full hybrid.
Any questions on the plan?
Mr. Chairman.
Tom?
I got a couple of questions for you, Superintendent. What if the COVID trending in January continues to spike?
Well, I think we, that, it gives us a window to be able to make more informed decisions. And then we, when's our next meeting? Is our meeting on the 11th?
Yes.
Yes, so we have a meeting there to be able to talk about where we are at that time, and I can make some, but what I'd like, you know, the thing for me, and you know this, is it's kind of the, giving people a heads up, is to here's where we are, here's where we're going, this is what we're doing. Look, we're taking people's opinions into play, we're taking people's recommendations, suggestions, and looking. There's no perfect model, but, but there's no need for us to go full remote at this time. I know there's a push for that. I don't think that is wise, especially given, because we have to still meet the needs of kids that are challenging to do in the remote models, which I think it's safer to do what I'm proposing than any other model that we could possibly do.
My next question, Superintendent, are teachers in the building?
Yes, teachers are in the building. That's been agreed to with our MOU, and that seems to be working well. They're, of course, as you saw, when there's inclement weather, if it's a snow There, of course, as you saw, when there's inclement weather, if it's a snow day, we've agreed that everyone would be able to work from home on those days. So, in this model, it would continue as it's continuing now, for example, Wednesday is a day where, a regular Wednesday, although it's a half-day Wednesday this week with the vacation, but everyone will be working in their buildings on that day.
Barring any hysteria that continues to fly around as a result of COVID-19, I think that we, by opening up in the hybrid model like we did in September, was a real good decision on our part, as we've seen the numbers nationally reflect that schools continue to have low incidence. It's the holidays that spite the numbers, and so now we have to mitigate those numbers, and I think this is a good plan going forward. I want to commend you, Superintendent, on that. My next big question, Superintendent, is, given all of these change orders that are in place, what about MCAS?
Great question. So, there's still conversation about that at the state level, but it's been pushed back, and that's all I can say at this time. We had a conversation with the Commissioner a week ago, and they're pushing back the window, but we're still going to need to prepare for what testing would look like in person, even if we're in a hybrid model at the time. So, even the kids that are in Cohort B would have to be coming in for testing, so we've got to figure all that out, and there'll be more direction from the state on that, but that's what we're being told this time.
Yeah, that doesn't make me feel satisfied in any shape of the word, because there's been such a dent and gap in learning over the past several months as a result of COVID, that MCAS just seems more and more unrealistic to me at this time. I'm not saying that it's unrealistic in normal times, but in this time, I just think it's just irrelevant and unrealistic to have those kinds of demands where we've had all of these gaps in learning taking place. I wish I could send a firm message to Desi and to the Commissioner, Commissioner Riley. I'd be very happy to have a conversation with them face-to-face, but I know that there's a lot of administration and bureaucracy tied up in their decisions. I know it's not an easy decision on their part, but I think in terms of fairness, it's irrelevant at this time. With that, I yield.
Kev?
So, just a couple of questions. The, I saw the data, and a lot of people are quarantining, employees are quarantining. What is the policy on that, whether they can actually, so if I was, if I needed to quarantine for a close contact or whatever, but I feel fine, do I work from home?
So, I'm going to, we're going to have two people. I'm going to have Tom come up and answer questions from here, and we have Nurse Long behind you. So, we'll start with Nurse Long to answer the part of the question around, in terms of policy, how does it work with quarantine?
Good evening. If you're a close contact of somebody that has tested positive, there are three different versions of quarantine that you can do, three options. So, one is, if you're symptomatic, you have to do the 14 days of quarantine. If you're asymptomatic, no symptoms, you can test negative on your fifth day of quarantine and get released from quarantine in eight days. Or, the third option is, you can just quarantine for 10 days, no testing, but with no symptoms, you can come back on the 11th day. Those are the three options.
My question is about the work.
So, with respect to working from home, if a person goes into quarantine, there's nothing that prevents them from voluntarily working from home. In most cases, those people are on the FF-CRA, so they're being paid without using their sick time during that time period. If they voluntarily want to participate or work from home, they may. What we don't do is have them work from home, because in that particular case, realistically, anybody could say, I have symptoms, I'd like to go work from home for 10 days. So, that was not in the MOA for them to be able to work from home without being ordered to quarantine and without voluntarily doing.
I mean, I personally think that if, maybe we can get data on that, how many people that are in quarantine are actually working? So, if I teach a class, and I have 10 kids in front of me that I teach and I care about, and that's the majority of people that work, that's what they care about, and I have to quarantine because the DPH, somebody tells me I have to quarantine, why the hell can't I go home and work and help my kids during that time? And it's a culture of, if we do, I don't know what it is. What does the data show?
But in the current model, that's probably an easier model to pull off. When we were in the full hybrid model, and those 10 kids were in the classroom, and now the teacher's saying, I'm going to be from home for 10 days, that's a more difficult to pull off, because I still have to have somebody in the room to watch the 10 kids.
Right, so you have a sub who doesn't know the kids and doesn't know the curriculum, helping to facilitate the teacher teaching like we're just listening to Nurse Long. And I'm just wondering how much of it is, when we see this data that says, or this information, X amount of people are quarantining, what's the next step of that? Does that mean they're not working at all, helping kids? So, that helps to figure out what is the, what's the best model to go with for hybrid or full remote or anything? So, I guess we don't have a policy that says that you can't work if they choose to.
The last thing is that, in probably 30 to 40 cases, I'm on my second or third quarantine with some individuals.
Of no work?
Of either some work, or the first time they may have gotten, gone out to get tested, or they had symptoms, they tested voluntarily, they were cleared, they returned. In some cases, they may have been tagged as a close contact, they had to stay out for the entire time. The scenario she just described has changed several times over the course of this period, and there's been several modifications of it. They're finally sort of dialing it in as far as what works and what doesn't work as far as quarantine. And then you could have a situation where a parent has a child who tests positive out of a school or something, and the parent has to be a close contact, so they're staying home again. So, in some cases, we have people on their second or third time away, so. And there is a mechanism, if somebody has a medical situation and has to quarantine from home, that's in the MOA, they can come to the sick, it works like the sick bank committee, they can apply for a medical dispensation or work from home, I don't know if that's the correct word, but that's what we'll call it, and then that comes before a committee. We meet weekly, there's several people that we've granted that access to that way. There's a couple of different avenues where we can accomplish what you're talking about. The issue is going in, when the kids were in the full hybrid, and most of them were in school one week or the other week, it was much more difficult to pull off, and it created some staffing situations.
Yeah, I just think ultimately, if people are on quarantine but can work and service their kids, you know, we should encourage that, not discourage it.
And in many cases, they do, but it has to be voluntary, because if you're on a paid leave, I can't make you work from home.
I understand, but...
In other words, for me to make you work from home, I really have to almost put you out and say, I'm going to allow you to work from home.
I'm just concerned that if we're actually encouraging, oh, I'm on quarantine, I can't work, that's what I don't want to...
Yeah, but you can't declare you're on quarantine. There's a whole process. So, you get put on quarantine by a public health official.
Right, so, what I meant by that was if I report to Nurse Long or the Department of Public Health that I was a close contact with somebody, you know what I mean, it all starts somewhere with, yeah, I was a close contact with somebody, or this or that, then you go to the next level. That's what I meant, initiating a quarantine. You know, you have to give your own information to be why you go out, and I'm just concerned if we're, we're trying to encourage people to work with their kids, and we're not discouraging it, I think is what you're saying.
That's correct.
So, with that, that's fine. I had a different question for the Superintendent. Somebody raised on the, the citizen input about masks being inappropriately worn. Do we have anything on, I believe when we first started this, that if a student is told they need to wear a mask, they're going on full remote. Has anybody been placed on full remote for that reason?
Yes, from the high school, yes.
So, it's not a...
No, there's, but there are, but there are some kids that don't wear masks, and I don't know if all the time we know who's who, so we may think this kid's not listening to us, but they haven't, they don't have to wear a mask.
They might have a reason.
So, the answer to your question is, we've taken a very hard line, and I know that Principal Damaris has been very clear about his expectations, and he's made some tough decisions, and at the other school levels, I haven't heard many, as many problems from what I've observed, things have...
You could refute what was said in that, what was read at that citizen input. You wouldn't necessarily say that.
I don't want to say I would agree with some of the stuff that was said, but I mean, it's someone's opinion, and...
No, I mean, I just meant about the masks, you're taking it serious.
But sometimes people, oh, yes, we are, and I think sometimes people don't know a full story, and therefore make an assumption. So, like, if Billy doesn't have to wear his mask, and they see, if we don't know that, you don't know that. But if, you know, we've said to families, I know the high school is taking a hard line with kids, if you were not wearing a mask, and you refuse to follow our rules, and there's no other reasons why you can't, we'll move you to Cohort B.
Do schools know that, a given school know which kids are not, the teachers, do they, does the staff know who, so if I'm in the school, and Kevin has permission because of an issue, whatever it is, does the staff know that Kevin doesn't wear a mask like everybody else, so that we're all not trying to police something that...
Well, that's the question that I don't think...
I can answer that.
Go ahead.
So, we have multiple children with medical issues that have notes from their physician that they cannot wear a mask. Some of them, we try to wear, they wear shields for us, but they don't wear the mask. And how we communicate that to the teachers is, in X2, they alert that we put a note in that everybody can see for their roster, they can go, and they have their students come in, it's under the medical caducea, they click it, and it will say that the student has permission not to wear a mask. So, that's how the teachers will find out about it.
Thank you. I had a question on the Commissioner's statement or whatever, I don't know if it's a regulation about the live instruction.
Yep.
And how does that impact whether, what model we're in?
So, it doesn't, but, so just for disclosure to the rest of the committee, the Board of Education voted last Tuesday to change the regulation on masks, CMR 27.4, or whatever it's, it's how much time on learning is required, and requiring 35 hours over a 10-day period of live instruction. So, we're about two and a half hours under the new minimum requirement that the state just adopted. At the same time, they already approved our plan. So, in the middle of the game, they changed the rules, and live instruction is synchronous, two-way, and we do a really good job of it, K to 8. It's not used as much as the high school, but it's not something that we've mandated, we've incentivized it in our MOU, and many people are using it. In order, this is the hard part, in our model, the A, B, Co., and let's just, I want to be real clear, our model is dictated by six-foot distancing, so we can only fit a certain amount of kids in. That's why we have a model, it's very complicated, because we're running essentially four schedules at once. So, when Cohort C is in their week, they're here, and they have a teacher in front of them, but when they're on their remote week, they don't have that same live instruction for the same period of time. They have their check-ins, their morning meetings, and those things, but it's because I would need twice as many teachers to be able to have that same level of instruction. So, the real dirty secret here is that districts that went full remote, they have no problem with meeting this, because that's all their teachers do, is they're teaching. It's harder in the model that we've done, but we felt the value of at least having a week of in-person was better than no in-person. So, this, there will be some sort of a letter that comes out at some point from the department saying, you know, there's 100 and something districts that don't meet the hours, we're going to have to take a look at what we're doing. I think there's some ways we can get close, very close to the 35 by some adjustments on Wednesdays, but I don't have the letter yet from the department, so I just know, based on the data that we submitted, we're about two and a half hours short.
You said the high school doesn't do the live...
I don't, the teachers volunteer to do it, and some do, but it's not as prevalent as at the elementary level.
No, I mean, when the kids are on their week, so they're in person, obviously. So, on that other week, they just get nothing, so...
No, that's not true. They don't get nothing, it's just that they don't get the full seamlessness of, you're in one week, and half the kids are on the computer, and the half the kids are in front of you, and then it flips the following week. Some teachers aren't using the full live synchronous instruction model, and therefore, the hours that I have aren't, that's why there's less hours.
Yeah, I understand. Is that going to change now? Let's say the plan gets, goes through till the end of the semester. So, are they now, if I'm a teacher at the high school, and I had one day, I have eight kids, the next day I have eight kids, am I now teaching 16 kids on full remote for the rest of the semester?
For right now, if those kids were in Cohort C or D, that's who you're teaching remotely.
But together, I mean, so...
Yeah, they're together now.
So, when you go full remote, they're actually getting more live instruction than they would have if it was on and off, on and off?
Yes, and that's one of the reasons why we wanted to keep it at the high school level through the semester, to finish and then get back to a place where we can get back in person.
But in reality, they're getting more actual face time with the teacher live under this model than they would if it was on one week and off the next week, is what I think is...
And we would say we agree.
Right. The only thing I would say is, it's, the staffing is an issue, you know, you know it, all the data shows it, the numbers are through the roof, and it's real concerning to me. I felt all along that we should weigh in a little, so that it's not just like your decision against ours, or whatever. So, as we go through this debate, I personally would like to take a vote to support the program that you recommended, so that we're not just doing informational pieces. So, I think the data shows at the high school level, as we just explained, is different than the elementaries, and although they need to be in, everything that I've looked at or read is that putting a little two-week window after the holiday isn't necessarily a bad thing, and I think the science calls for it. So, I'd like to, at some point today, take a vote on this. With that, I yield.
Mimi?
Thank you. Dr. Malone, how are the connectivity situations in the schools since the kids came off the hybrid? Are there any challenges at this point?
I think we've had some challenges all along, but I mean, Scott, correct me, I mean, we had 1,000 hotspots, how many have we given out? So, we've given out 768 since the 1,000 that we had. We have connected with every single kid that, you know, in terms of like, we got the new policy that kids have to turn and on and off their monitors, we've been enforcing that. I think there's been great improvements in engagement, and then you look at the attendance, attendance is actually up in terms of moving to the modified hybrids, particularly at the secondary level.
How about from the schools? Like, are there issues coming from the schools to the homes with all the teachers being online at the same time?
So, bandwidth questions. We had, like, once we had one problem with Google, but other than that, there hasn't been the concerns. I think our tech teams last year, I think, really did a good job of building the pressure testing, what is, you know, what that looks like when everyone's on at the same time. So, we haven't had any problems there. Complaints have been...
This morning was an issue.
Small.
What was that?
Just point of information, this morning, there was an issue as well. There was the Google hiccup that affected pretty much all of Microsoft, I think, and then this morning, there was a glitch, I know at the high school anyway, because there was an issue with some connectivity, but to what extent, I don't know, but...
It's normal activity, but it...
Right, I just didn't know if the schools were handling the connectivity, because everybody's on at once now. Is everything running smoothly on the school side?
Based on the information I have, the answer's yes, but we'll continue to, you know, we've got great people, we're working on managing it every day.
My next question, then I'll make it quick. Cohort C and D, when we end up hopefully getting back to school in the full model... Cohort C and D, when we end up hopefully getting back to school in a full model, hopefully soon, will all students have the same amount of in-person learning time?
Yes.
Cohort C and D.
They will have the same equal amount when we get back.
So C will have just as much as D and D will have, okay.
Yes.
There'll be equal in-person learning time?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I yield.
Paul?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to piggyback what School Committeewoman Larabee asked you, Mr. Superintendent. And so we can say now here tonight that every student that is working from home, remote now till January 19th, and not Cohort A because they're still in school, they're going to school, they have connection.
Yes. And if there's any issues, we've asked parents to contact the school and we'll help as best we can on the spot.
Okay, great. As far as, is Nurse Long still here?
Yes.
Oh, hey, Nurse Long, I just wanted to ask you, with the obvious, you know, uptick in the, in the schools with, you know, maybe a handful of students or maybe more and teachers and, you know, being quarantined and whatnot, and we see the numbers increasing in the city and in the schools. And what was discussed earlier was that we talked about a, after, after the holidays is going to be an uptick as well. And you agree with that?
I do.
Okay. The up, so my question would be, is, are the increases in school, in the schools that we're seeing now and potentially what we might see in the, after the holidays worrisome? Do we need to be, you know, maybe more hands-on, even though I know we have been and I think it's very good and you're doing a great job? But what's your concern, if there is any, that we don't foresee possibly right now?
Well, I can only attest to what happened after Thanksgiving. So the two weeks after Thanksgiving were horrendous, especially every Monday and Tuesday because we get all the cases from the week before and over the weekend. So it's very hard to handle sometimes at the school level, all the cases that are coming in the beginning of the week. And I foresee after Christmas, it's probably going to be worse after New Year's because they're going to be out longer, they're going to be with their families, with extended families, because the increase that we saw Thanksgiving was only four days that they were home. And they're going to be home a lot longer. So I foresee, and if you look at, the other thing is, if you look at the state statistics, four days after Thanksgiving, from the fourth day to the 13th day after Thanksgiving, the amount of cases increased by 96%. So that's why when I spoke to the superintendent, I suggested the two weeks, because I think it might even be worse by the second week after the holidays.
And how comfortable also are you with the, with the, you know, the contact tracing? Do you feel that, not on the city side, but on the school side specifically, obviously? Are we doing, are we doing the job that we should be doing? And do you feel comfortable with that, with the contact tracing that we're currently doing right now?
Yeah, I actually think that all the nurses are doing a great job and I think the increase that we're seeing, we're being able to handle it because we only have Cohort A in right now and we've been able to handle it. But if we had C, D, and A in, I don't know if we could handle all that on an uptight week. You know, like if it was after Thanksgiving, those two weeks, if we had C, D, and A in, I think it would have been very difficult, very, very difficult.
So...
Because it's just not...
Oh, go ahead, go ahead, I'm sorry.
...the staff, staff too.
Okay, so given, given maybe the possibility of a, of, like we mentioned, after the holidays, an uptick, and we do actually go back on the 19th in that, in the hybrid mode that the superintendent is talking about. And you said that there is concern because the last, as far as after Thanksgiving, there was an uptick and that the contact tracing was very difficult, but you did do it. Do you anticipate possibly maybe getting more help? Or have you asked maybe for more help? Do you think we need more help, more bodies, as far as you're concerned, that will work with you to do more contact tracing and be even more effective than what you already are?
Well, it's kind of hard to predict exactly what's going to happen. However, I think with having just Cohort A come back, with the staff that I have, we can handle that next two weeks before the C and D's get back. I think it's going to be very difficult, the first two days coming back with not knowing what's happened the previous week while everybody was away. I think that's going to be difficult. I'm trying to work something out with the CTC supervisor to see if I can get some list from the board of health so that we will know what children are not supposed to be in school or what contacts are not supposed to be in school. So we can also notify communication that they're not supposed to get on the bus, because that's what we do all the time, every single day. So I think that's going to be a little bit difficult, but I'm going to try and work something out for those first couple of days coming back.
Okay, and I, and I just personally think that, that you're doing a very, very good job, but I do think that contact tracing is the key to, you know, maybe keeping this virus, you know, if it's possible at all, in place. Don't you agree?
Yeah, and contact tracing to start as soon as we find out about a case. And that's why, you know, actually Dr. Malone has been great in letting me have people to help me because I was working like eight hours a day on the weekends and, you know, told me I could have some help because we want to prevent those students from coming in, those potentially infectious children that are now close contacts, to coming into school on the Monday and then now they're in class and we've got another problem if they become positive. So we're trying to keep a step ahead to keep them home before they can infect some other children and that would stop the spread that way.
No, I, and that's, I'll yield there, Mr. Mayor, but I just wanted to say that thank you very much for the job that you're doing, Nurse Long, and I commend you and your staff as well, so thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Constance?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, Mr. Coogan, just an HR question, I guess. So when you mentioned you have more than one individual who's been on a second or possibly even a third quarantine, how are we determining or what documentation are we requiring as a district in order to have that person designate as a close contact?
So when you, when you're designated as a close contact, the CTC or the tracers contact you and there's usually a letter that follows up with that.
Right.
That says you've been diagnosed or you've been identified as a close contact of a positive person. They don't tell you who the person was.
Right.
But they designate that. Now, in the beginning, it was pretty close and then as the swell started, the CTC started to fall further and further behind, so sometimes it could be two or three days. So we relaxed that to allow them to go out saying they were contacted positively and let the paperwork catch up to it. But we have, get some kind of a designation, if somebody's a close contact, we say, send in the letter, identify and use the close contact. Now, they only get one bite at the apple for that FF-CRA allotted time.
Yep.
After that, they have to use either their own accrued sick time or go unpaid if they don't have time available. So in some cases, those second and third times, it's, because it could be a tough situation. The first time you could be legitimately ill and you get the benefit of the 10 days. The second time, you could have been exposed to somebody through no fault of your own and you're identified, and now you're going to be out for a period of time while we do the contact.
Right, what I'm concerned about is a couple of things. Obviously, if they're a close contact and that's legit through, identified through the contact traces and they have the letter, then yeah, they should be out and they should follow the three options that were presented tonight in terms of asymptomatic, symptomatic, or if they choose neither, then I think, if I heard correctly, 10 days of quarantine. And so my concern is that people self-identifying as, well, I was a close contact, well, and you may accept that and say, okay, well, start your quarantine period and let's wait for the paperwork.
What we tell them is...
Are there situations where we're not getting that paperwork or...
In those cases, we tell them, if you do not submit the paperwork, you're going to be using your sick time. So they're usually pretty cooperative when that's the option.
Right, so that's, that's the, you can quarantine if you self-identify.
That's correct.
Go out and do it.
What we don't want to do is introduce them to the building and create exposure. So what we're telling them is, look, play ball with us, right? In other words, if you've been identified as a close contact, you're going to get some sort of documentation and a release from quarantine.
Mm-hmm.
Because you can't come back from that quarantine without the release.
Right.
You get a release date. You have to be quarantined until 12:21 or whatever the date might be.
Correct.
So without that paperwork, that's a, that's a second way of verifying that it's a legitimate quarantine opportunity.
Right.
Because otherwise, we ask them, and if there are more than five days in any case, you've got to have a doctor's note to return. Doctors can't give that note to get them on a quarantine, they have to have a doctor's note. So either way, we have some kind of follow-up.
Okay. I mean, again, and I would hate to think that there may be situations where it's being abused, but it sounds like we have a pretty good handle on taking into consideration the delay that the paperwork may, the delay in the paperwork from the tracers or from the board of health departments in terms of close contacts. So the way we deal with that is we put them out with notice that if we don't get this documentation, that you're on your own time or you're on your own sick time.
And over the exposure of time here that's happened, Karen Long and her team have gotten more involved in the actual tracing piece and they're using their contacts in the CTC to verify and things out. And so we're really tightened up the timeline.
Right, okay.
And they've been outstanding with that. The second person I'd just like to recognize is in our office, Jolene Smith spends probably six to eight hours a day just tracking this, making sure that people are using the time legitimately, giving them dates, staying in touch, making sure we have the documentation. Literally, we've had probably 600, 625 cases of either quarantine or exposure. Those aren't all positive case because quarantine is not a positive case, but people using the time, I think up through the end of November, the average was about five and a half days, so people were using it responsibly. They weren't saying, I'm out for 10 days automatically.
Mm-hmm.
Once they test, once they clear, they come back, they get a return date and they're back when they're supposed to be. So it wasn't that everybody maxed out that time and it's been a huge management project, but it's been well, I think.
Well, thank you to your staff and to you and obviously to the nursing staff because it's important. I mean, obviously, we're all professionals, you want to be able to take individuals at their word, that their contacts, and as long as we're looking out for the best interest of not only the staff, but also the district. I mean, obviously, someone's identified themselves as a close contact, then we should have them out rather than saying, well, no, we still need you to come to work until we get verification because in fact, if they are ill, you know, there goes your spread rate, potentially. So I'm glad to see that there are checks and balances to make sure that people are there.
Trust, but verify and we, and we, I would say most people have been very cooperative.
My former colleague, Mr. Martins, used to say often, trust with verification, so point taken well by Mr. Martins. I will just say this, that in terms of the in-person or hybrid learning, as someone raised the question, I could tell you that, having been on vacation myself and listened to some of the online instruction from the high school perspective, and I'm not going to embarrass the educators, not that I'm, not that I would embarrass them, but I don't have enough praise for the way they've been conducting themselves. I mean, the engagement, the level of engagement going on virtually is really impressive. Better, better in my opinion than when I was home a couple of days and this hybrid mix was going on. I could tell you that, I'll speak, you know, from my perspective, my daughter's in a far better place now educationally with the virtual education that's going on. I mean, her teacher's a dynamic. I mean, even this morning with the hiccup with the connectivity and the bandwidth or whatever was going on, it was delayed. And again, I don't want to embarrass people by calling them out, but she had some really caring instructors who were doing their best, probably without an IT background, to try to figure out how to make things better for that class in terms of if the screen freezes, I want you to try this and let me try to work. And working through all those glitches and then teaching on top of that is huge. So I could tell you that I hear it. I mean, it's like being present, although not in front of a screen, but I can hear what's going on and the back and forth, the level of engagement that's encouraged in terms of, you want to know if, whether or not the cameras turning them on and off is working? All I hear all day is, okay, you know, if you don't have your cameras on, let's put them back on, I got to take attendance. You can hear them taking attendance. So that piece, I can tell you that is far better than it was with the hybrid stuff. The hybrid stuff where they were at home, trying to just go on and get their own classes or doing a check-in and then trying to figure things out on their own, to me, just seemed like it was difficult at best to learn in that model. So kudos to, you know, not just the ones obviously that I've heard, but I'm sure there are others that are making do with what they have. I know there was some pushback with respect to virtual snow day, but it sounds like in talking with the superintendent, 80% of the students were mock-present or engaging in education, where if we had done a two-hour delay and asked those students to come in and delay transportation, we hear those attendance rates, they're usually, you know, 50%, sometimes even lower. And so that many more students were actually engaged in learning during the snow days. And I understand the other piece of that is let kids be kids and there may be an opportunity for that. Maybe a time when the superintendent says, hey, we're going to have a traditional snow day. It's not going to be a day of learning, go out, build a snowman, do some shoveling, go sledding, whatever. And that may come, but we rolled it out, it seemed like it worked, 80% attendance throughout the district seemed to me like it, it worked. And I'll say my comments regarding the vote that was taken by Desi to increase the synchronized learning, you know, I think somebody's already made the comment, you know, changing the rules sort of midway through the process. I know we played by the rules, we're asked to submit a reopening plan, we did on time. We were one of the districts, or one of few districts across the state that actually offered students an opportunity to come in to our buildings in person in a safe way, that took into consideration the CDC guidelines in terms of spacing. There were other districts that just, you know, waited and rolled it in gradually. And for those districts, yeah, they may need this standard, but as far as I'm concerned, if we're short, then we're short. I don't know that we can go back and renege now on the MOUs that we put in place. We did that in good faith and that's my, my two cents on that particular issue. But I agree, getting back to, briefly to the topic, I agree with the plan that's put forth. I think it'd be impossible for Nurse Long and her staff, day one, coming back after a holiday to try to contact trace all the number of students that may be positive or may have been a close contact during the break, the winter break, giving her staff and her some time to sort of catch up with those numbers, if you will, and do the work that they do. I think in the long run, will have a greater benefit because if not, they just come in and we're sending them home or they become symptomatic and we send them home, the potential to expose other students and staff is just, you know...
And we know there's a, we know there's a lag following that break, right? So we had the Thanksgiving break and then that first week after, which was the end of that week, was when we started to see the numbers come up. So we're going to be going out for a nine, 10-day break. So we know following that, there's going to be a lot of socialization out there, gatherings and whatnot, coming out of that. And I just want to give a safe amount of time for the system to sort of react and for us to catch those, those cases and try to react to those.
Yeah, and I'll just close with this. You know, when we were thinking about reopening, my comments were such that we would watch the data and we would, you know, rely on medical professionals and their guidance through this and that we wouldn't just make hasty decisions and I think we've done that. You know, I think the superintendent and Nurse Long and her team have put together information, I mean, it's right there before us. I mean, clearly, this is an issue we're dealing with and to the extent that we as a district can help mitigate that or slow that down, you're not going to get rid of it. That's the reality. I mean, this virus isn't going to be stopped by any one thing. It's going to be a culmination of things all the time, including the vaccination, but it's going to have people adhering to the guidelines that are put forth and over time, I think, we're on the backside of the hill, I think, going down. So I say we stay the course and keep looking at what's important and that's the safety of our students and our staff. Now, educationally, I, you know, we still want to make sure we're doing that. That's important as well. But with that, thank you, Mr. Chairman, I yield.
Anything further on the reopening plan? Kevin?
Just a question on the, I know that, I can't remember if the citizen input was about the, so, committee that's put together between teachers and whoever to talk about their recommendations, but I'm a little torn myself in the, the way the numbers are currently, we're having teachers all come in the building. When we were in the spring...
When we were in the spring, the numbers weren't anywhere near what they are now and the teachers were allowed to teach from home. And I'm wondering if, is there any argument to be made on either half? If we're going to go full remote, why would we not just let the teachers that have been doing yeoman's work and they're stressed and everything? Why would we not let them teach from home under the current numbers that are through the roof?
The first part of your question was in the spring, the state government shut down all operations. So everyone was working from home. But as you know, that model was not successful with the remote learning. We negotiated with our unions about the value for common planning and materials and the bandwidth issues and connectivity issues that teachers would teach from their buildings for that time. And that's what was approved. Again, on inclement weather days, if I shut down because of snow conditions or other weather conditions, folks will be allowed to work from home. We're still going to have 1,400 students in the in-district, in-person. And there will be this equity issue about everyone's coming to work to serve kids. You get those kids and then you have some teachers who aren't teaching those kids. Should they be able to work from home? My personal opinion and what we negotiated was, no, if we're all getting paid for a day's work, it should be in the place if we can do it safely. And I think we've proven we can do it safely by the individual rooms that people are doing it out of or the other spaces. But it's, you know, if we got to a place where we had to go full remote and there was a huge uptick, we would, of course, consider something that drastic.
So it's, it was brought up by that advisory committee? Is that what the proper name is?
We have an advisory committee that we agreed to in the MOU that would provide recommendations to the superintendent and that I'd take them in consideration.
And they recommended to let teachers stay home or was that not...
No, they, no, they did not. They actually voted 5-3. And again, they are only advisory, that teachers would work from the buildings.
Yeah, I just think it's, you know, the time right now, the numbers are through the roof. So I guess you could always pivot. If in January it started to get a lot worse, then you would pivot full remote. But ultimately, that's just a thought of mine is that the people are basically, they've been working hard and if there's a way that we can give them some relief, I'd like to do it. With that, I yield.
Anything further? Okay. That was a discussion. But I know Kevin made the suggestion, we take a vote to support the superintendent's position. We can take an informal vote if you want to. You want to do that?
Still will of the committee, I mean, I get my...
Everybody okay with that? Okay, let's give it a vote. Go ahead then. Just an informal vote to support the superintendent's reopening plan.
So moved.
Turn it to second.
Second. There you go.
Mr. Agia?
This is vote.
Yeah.
Yeah, yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Har?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Next item is the discussion and vote to approve the safe routes to school infrastructure improvements to Fonseca as presented by Ken Pacheco, Chief Operating Officer.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion to second. Mr. Pacheco.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The proposal, actually, the grant has already been approved. And what I'm looking for is your support on the grant to join in with the city. This project has basically been approved at the Viveras School with the bump outs and traffic control and areas of concern that were addressed with a $1.2 million improvement plan at Viveras. Fonseca is a little different in the fact that the dollar amount is less. It's in the $600,000 range. And the area itself is less congested around the school than the Viveras. It's a good project. It allows for line of sight improvements with those bump outs. It put paddles, basically, to allow students to cross busy streets, which will happen also on this site. And it's an encouragement tool, basically, for students to get exercise and walk to school and utilize those safe routes. Both Viveras and Fonseca have walking school buses, which was part of the state's approval to move this project forward as they did with the Viveras. There's no dollar, there's no cost to the city of Fall River other than oversight along with the oversight that we'll provide on the project.
Any discussion?
Yeah, just a...
Tom?
Just a quick question. What's it look like? It's walking routes or is it traffic control or...?
So basically, it's both. So the, what they do is they map out by population where students are coming from to that individual school. Not bus routes, but walking routes, bicycle routes. And they try and provide different traffic controls. So if there is a stop light, you know, a traffic control light, such as there are at the corner of Quarry and Bedford, that light may be improved with pushpats to allow people across the street there. They narrow very wide streets with these bump outs so that students don't have to peek in between cars in order to cross the street. What they do is the car is a setback, the curb sticks out and at a crosswalk, that area is now free and clear for students to see before they cross if there are any oncoming cars where a traffic light may not be available to them. So those are the items that will be improved at Fonseca, just as they were at Viveras.
Does it also include any additional personnel such as traffic crossing guards or anything like that?
It does not. Viveras, along with Fonseca, already have crossing guards. And those crossing guards are located in areas where they're needed. There may be a relocation after this is done of those traffic officers to other areas, traffic crossing guards.
Thank you. I yield.
Anything further? I have a motion to second. Deb, please call the roll.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Har?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Item 11.4 is a discussion and vote to approve the HVAC job description as referred by the Facilities and Operations Subcommittee.
Motion to approve?
Second.
I have, by Ken Pacheco. Any discussion on that item, guys? Tom?
Yes, I think it's money well invested. So the overriding question I have, Ken, is HVAC technology is growing in leaps and bounds these days. In all of our new buildings, it's a serious requirement for efficient heating, air conditioning, air filtration, cleanliness, the whole thing. Any hopes of creating a curriculum with Chapter 74 maybe, hands-on, at the high school for these kids?
I think there's always a hope. This particular program is currently at Diamond. But we do have some duplicates, you know, programs such as culinary, early childcare, which is a new program that Diamond has just been approved for. So I don't believe that it's a hard no. I think that it's a situation where we're not, we're not set up for it currently at the new high school. It was no space, there was no space made available for HVAC. However, there may be an opportunity for programs such as that in our Durfee After-Doc, you know, program after hours. So it might be something that we could do, maybe at RPA. We could do it after hours at Durfee.
So, Mr. Superintendent, I just look at something like that as maybe for our thought pattern to consider moving forward into the future with these kids and Chapter 74 funding and maybe thinking about growing this program in a direction like that.
So the, there's something that we would consider with the After-Doc program because the likelihood of us getting approval of the Chapter 74 HVAC is slim to none, given the nine programs that we have.
Yeah.
But Diamond and Durfee, where, you know, Fall River Public Schools, we have this joint grant where we're looking at programs at Diamond that our kids can benefit from after hours. So that's, HVAC was something that we thought of from the start, that and the auto body, prefab, those...
So I keep hearing about the program after dock. Is it going to take shape at some point?
So, yeah. So, I mean, we'd be off the ground right now if it was a normal year. I mean, we've got to have all the ducks in a row. And, you know, today, LVO, Superintendent Ferrer emailed me and was talking about next year's Part II grant already. So we're putting together a one-page, I'll send it out to the committee so you guys see everything that we've done and what we have to do next. And then you guys can know about the direction that that's going.
I just think that represents such a wonderful opportunity for our kids, maybe in the middle grades to even start to develop an idea like, hey, this is a great program I could grow into at the high school age.
If we didn't, I mean, if we got the SOA money, we, and it's still on the board, but, you know, we're going to build, you know, we got the construction craft program at the high school. It's the only one. Diamond has carpentry and those things. But we have this construction craft labor. At Talbot, we have the space. We want to build that at Talbot. So there's going to be a hands-on component. If we think about the programs we have at Durfee, if we start to mirror some of those across the middle schools, it opens up a whole new world. So that's something that we're considering. And I think the good news is, you know, we have a good relationship with Diamond. This After-Doc program exemplifies teamwork. And we'll continue to work with faculty, staff and administration there to build these programs.
I mean, if there's anything I can do, Superintendent, in that regard, please keep me aware of that.
Of course.
Thank you. I yield.
Anything further? Kevin?
Can you articulate the need? I'm reading about overtime, use of other people, I think getting rid of some vendors, maybe something about, how do we justify that we have the need to spend $59,000 on that?
So currently, the one HVAC person we have on staff is basically doing filters every day, all day long. And there are a lot of other things that an HVAC person needs to do that we're either having plumbers work on when they have time, which is not what I'd like the plumbers to be doing when they have time because there are other projects that I'd like to get started at the pace in other buildings. The second piece is that when I can't use my HVAC person to change filters, because they're on filters, then I'm giving that work out to vendors at a much higher price. So the second HVAC person will allow, during our quarterly changing of filters now, it will allow that person to be able to jump on those filters, wipe out the filters much quicker and then get back on the HVAC PM. However, it'll also allow that person to be doing PM a lot more than just what we do now. And there is, HVAC without a doubt, because of the current situation, is requiring much more attention than it ever has. And the issue will be, and it's part of the superintendent's goals for the upcoming years, is that the systems throughout the district need to be looked at for upgrades. And some of that, some of those upgrades, we're going to be able to do in-house as opposed to spending a lot of capital money on private contractors. So this second person will allow us to be much more flexible in allocating the work to that second person and also to allow PM work to happen much more frequently than it currently can.
What is the certification? Is there such a certification?
So there's, yeah, there's different licenses for HVAC and they vary. Some of it would be technical controls. Some of it would be refrigeration recovery. Those are two areas that HVAC people can be licensed in. And then there are other technician-type licenses that coincide with state licenses on sheet metal that they will be able to...
The way I ask is, do you need to have a full person? Like you said, plumbers are doing it. Are they paid the same as the plumber?
Yes. So, well, they're a little less because without a license. So for instance, if we hire someone without a license that has HVAC experience, then they would be paid at a different level than if they had the particular licenses in HVAC.
Yep. I'm just, I'm not opposed to it. I think you've got a need for it. I'm just wondering if it's like an assistant. When you say they're changing our filters and that's a constant thing. Like I think a licensed plumber doesn't need to be changing filters. They have more things that you need a licensed plumber to do. But is there any assistance in that type of...
So basically, when I say the plumber's doing it, the plumber that's doing the work is, does have the licenses. So that plumber does HVAC. In fact, when we first hired him, he did this building, the filter changes in this building, which is every classroom, you know, has a filter because they're having, you know, a unit ventilator. And those unit ventilators, it's the cleaning of the coil. It's the vacuuming of the system. It's the oil and greasing of bearings and checking motor speeds. And basically, it's not just pop the filter and take it out because there's a couple of thousand filters across the district that we have to do quarterly. So that process now takes a while. So that person going into that classroom, jockeying around students now or trying to find empty classrooms, is spending 20 minutes, 30 minutes in a classroom trying to do that work and then moving on to the next one. So doubling that obviously gets us, with those filters, twice, you know...
So is this a second shift under that same logic?
We do, we are looking at the CBA to have a split shift, so to speak. So it won't be a second shift, but it'll be a split shift because we do have the need to do some of the work during the day. But this will allow us to have four hours without students and four hours with students.
And if it's not agreed to, we've got to do them during the day?
Um, every time we've done the interviews, the person doing it has had no issue. So I don't believe that we will have an issue. But we are, it's one of the things that is not being contested as we have the conversation right now.
Yeah.
In...
It's a similar question, but I think it's called a systems analyst that we were talking about hiring for the new, all the new schools.
For the new Durfee? Yeah.
Yeah, where is that at?
So we haven't, we do have all of our, all of our mechanics, licensed mechanics, going through the new Durfee, doing all the trainings as they come up. From that point forward, I would say in the next two months, we will be hiring or advertising for a system analyst that will work at Durfee but also be able to give us guidance in our other buildings.
And there's no way to combine these, there's totally separate?
Between this HVAC?
Yeah.
No, I don't believe so. I think it's, yeah. I think it's similar, but the person that we're looking for is a full MEP, not just, not just the HVAC. We're looking for electrical background, plumbing background.
But we approved that you're not coming back with that because of...
It'll be back. It's in the budget.
It's already in the budget.
It's already in the budget.
That's going to happen?
Yes.
With that, I yield. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Go ahead, Deb, please.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Har?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Finally, number 11.5 is a discussion and vote to approve the year-to-date budget report as presented by Kevin Almeida, Chief Financial Officer.
Motion to approve?
Second.
I have a motion to second. Any discussion with Kevin up here? Hearing none? Deb, please call the roll.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Har?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. We have some information for you. We have a number of retirements, resignations, appointments and sadly, a few desk notices. I just want those in the record.
Motion to accept?
Second. Roll call.
We have a roll call, please, Deb.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
We have a number of retirements, resignations, appointments, and sadly, a few desk notices. I just want those in the record.
Motion to accept.
Second.
Roll call.
We have a roll call, please, Deb.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Abstain.
Mr. Har?
Yes.
Mr. Hetzel?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Any new business to come before the committee tonight? Okay, we have requests for executive session. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
And a second?
Seconded.
Do you want to call the roll, Deb, please?
Mr. Agia?
Does he tell us first?
He tells us.
Bruce, please read the notice first.
First, we read National Law, Chapter 38, Section 2187, to review and approve executive session committee minutes for the November 9, 2020, regular meeting of the Fall River School Committee. Also, National Law, Chapter 38, Section 2187, to review and approve the executive session committee minutes for the November 24, 2020, regular meeting of the Fall River School Committee. Also, National Law, Chapter 38, Section 2183, to discuss strategy with respect to potential litigation relative to the transportation contracts with Trembley Bus in, out of District 7D van transportation, Amroll Bus, Typical Education Yellow Buses, and Wayling City in-District Special Education Bus, Summer Bus Transportation, and Bus Monitors, as the chair has determined that an open session may have a detrimental impact on the bargaining position of the, and litigating position of the committee. National Law, Chapter 38, Section 2183, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining relative to all paraprofessional employees of the Fall River School System, represented by the Fall River Federation of Paraprofessionals, as the chair has determined that an open session may have a detrimental impact on the bargaining position of the committee. National Law, Chapter 38, Section 21A1, to discuss complaints brought against a school official. Also, National Law, Chapter 38, Section 21A2, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, and/or to conduct contract negotiations with non-union personnel, including, without limitation, Intermill v. Garcia, Instructional Support Liaison Karen Faschiano, Instructional Support Liaison Krista Honey, Instructional Support Liaison Tracy Buston, Administrative Intern, Jasmine Baez, apparent community worker, Ed Matanese, strength and conditioning trainer, and Garetti Fattado, Administrative Assistant for Operations and Financial Services. We would reconvene, there may or may not be statements at that time.
Deb, please call the roll.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Har?
Yes.
Mr. Hetzel?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes.
Good evening. I'd like to call back to order the regular scheduled school committee meeting for December 21st, 2020. Madam Secretary, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Agia?
Here.
Mr. Costa?
Here.
Mr. Har?
Here.
Mr. Hetzel?
Here.
Mr. Corey?
Here.
Ms. Larrabee?
Here.
Were there any motions as a result of executive session before the committee tonight?
Motion to accept the executive session minutes for November 9th, 2020.
Seconded.
There's a motion made by Mr. Hetzel, seconded by Mr. Corey, to accept the executive session minutes for November 9th, for the Fall River School Committee. Madam Secretary, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Har?
Yes.
Mr. Hetzel?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Motion that we accept the executive session minutes for the November 24th, 2020, meeting for the school committee.
Seconded.
Motion made by Mr. Hetzel, seconded by Mr. Hart, to approve the executive session committee minutes for November 24th, 2020, for the regular meeting of the Fall River School Committee. Roll call, please.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Har?
Yes.
Mr. Hetzel?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Make a motion to accept the MOA as negotiated between the paraprofessional employees of the Fall River School System and the Fall River School Committee.
Seconded.
Motion made by Mr. Hetzel, seconded by Mr. Hart, to approve the MOA between the Fall River School Committee and the Fall River Paraprofessionals Union. Roll call, Madam Secretary.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Har?
Yes.
Mr. Hetzel?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yep.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Motion to accept the contract as negotiated between Intermill, Garcia, Instructional Support Liaison, and the Fall River School Committee.
Motion made. Is there a second?
Seconded.
Seconded by Mr. Hart. Roll call.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Har?
Yes.
Mr. Hetzel?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Motion to approve the contract made as negotiated by the Fall River School Committee and Karen Faschiano, Instructional Support Liaison.
Seconded.
Motion made by Mr. Hetzel, seconded by Mr. Hart. Roll call.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?